The public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Chair votes aye and the public hearing is closed. We will now turn to our regular council meeting with the pledge followed by the invocation to be given by Councilman Reneger tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bow your heads with you please.
Our dear gracious and most heavenly Father, we bow out today humbly ourselves before you asking your guidance and directions as we do business that affects the people of Prattville, Alabama. We also ask that you will be covering from the storms and tornadoes, comfort them, give them the aid that they need, help them to do as soon as possible. But also ask that you don't receive seed serving in harm's way.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilman Striplin?
Here.
Councilman Argo?
Here.
Councilman Miller?
Here.
Councilman Reneger?
Here.
Councilman Bowles?
Here.
Councilman Fink?
Here.
I now call this meeting of the Prattville City Council to order. Our character trait of the month is discernment, understanding what is really happening. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. This is for both the public hearing and the city council meeting held on May 3rd, 2011. These were circulated in advance. Can I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Reneger is their second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving these minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Chair votes aye and the minutes are approved. I'd like to at this point in time recognize Representative Beckman, Paul Beckman, who joins us. I always appreciate having fellow elected officials in the audience and invite you to come back as often as you wish. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda. As a reminder, we broke the public comment portion of our meeting into two sections with a recent revision of our rules and this portion is restricted to people who want to comment on an item on our agenda tonight. At the conclusion of the agenda, the second portion will be for persons who want to address us on any item, specifically those things that are not on the agenda. So at this point in time, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to address us on an item that is on tonight's agenda? Yes, sir. If you'll come down to the podium, state your name and address for the clerk.
My name is Ben Barnes. My address is 607 Vintage Way, Prattville, Alabama. Mayor Gillespie, council members, thank you for this opportunity to comment on item number three on the agenda, which is a request to rezone a parcel of land on County Road Four near Corley Road. I live in the Oaks of Buena Vista, about two and a half miles from the intersection of Highway 31 and County Road Four, near the beautiful and historic Buena Vista mansion. My concern about the request for annexation and rezoning is that it would include the construction, as I understand, of 600 family units to include apartments, patio, garden homes, and manufactured housing. I believe that such residential development would cause serious traffic problems along County Road Four, including areas near the existing West Stone Sports Complex and the intersection with US Highway 31, which is already treacherous during peak traffic period. It's my opinion that such increase in traffic will endanger the lives of Prattville citizens as well as visitors to our city. I respectfully ask that you deny the current request. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'll wait just a minute, any questions from the council? Okay. We appreciate you coming down to speak to us tonight. Is anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council on any item that appears on the agenda tonight? Mr. Dorsey?
Yes. Mr. President, Mayor, council members, I'm here to ask for your support for de-annexation of a piece of property that resides on the eastern side of I-65 properties. This property I've owned since sometime in the 70s. It was originally purchased to build an auto park. I ran into some opposition back in that time period from the dealers in Montgomery that managed to block the auto park phase of it. The property has been out there and we've basically been watching Prattville grow that way and Prattville's certainly done a lot of growth. At this time, I've had several interested parties through agents and direct contact that were interested and talked to me about the property on different developments and it's come to light that there's one missing link and the missing link seems to be the sewage. Every other utility is available out there, but the sewage is not. I've talked to the mayor and talked to several of y'all. The cost of putting sewage over there would be extraordinary, even for the city of Prattville, but it would just be extraordinary. And at this point, without sewage, I can't move any further ahead. That's the main reason I'm asking for de-annexation, the cost of that, and also, of course, the city planning committee has come out and recommended de-annexation. The city treasurer, our financial person, got up, I think, at the first or the second meeting and spoke about how it would never recoup the cost of putting sewer across the interstate. This is a cut-off piece of property. There's no adjoining property that meets the line of anything in the city of Prattville and I ask that I just be treated fairly and ask that you do what's right and de-annex that property.
Any questions for Mr. Dorsey? Okay, thank you. And I might have missed this, did you state your address for the clerk?
Yes, I'm sorry, 548 Selma Highway, Prattville.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to address us on an item on the agenda? Yes, sir.
I'm Jim Marshall from Montgomery, 4267 Lomac, 36106. I have been asked to postpone item number three, so we postponed tonight. Ordinance. County Road Four, Corley Road. Thank you.
If you'll wait just a minute, Mr. Marshall. Any questions for Mr. Marshall? Ken, if I can ask, your relationship to the property is?
Potential developable.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wish to address the council on an item on the agenda? Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we'll now move to your report.
I just wanted to start off with talking about our city fest. We had a lot of great food, great music, and great time the other night and I saw a few council members there and so forth and all I heard was great reviews on that. We've handled that weekend really, really well. The weather was great and I deem it was a success. One of our next items coming up would be this weekend, which is going to be a touch of truck this Saturday, starts at 10 o'clock. So if anybody can come down and out for that, that'd be beneficial to the citizens and mostly probably to the young kids who want to come out and just see exactly what a big truck is and so forth. One other item too is going to be coming up in the near future is Memorial Day, which is Monday, the 30th, around here at the courthouse. So if anybody could come around, come out for that and be there for those ceremonies, that would be great also. One other reminder is that June the 5th is our clicker ticket. It's funded by our Alabama Highway Safety, so there's no extra expense to the city on that, but it will probably bring in quite a bit of revenue, but it is pretty much a little bit of a forewarning, make certain we're aware of our seat belts. We should be doing that anyway, but it's just a reminder to buckle up or you will be paying the cost. June 1st was also, we're going to have our city employee appreciation day. I'm inviting the council to come out also. We have one sponsor for that, which is me, so come out and have lunch on me and show the city employees how much we appreciate them and so forth. They've been working really hard for us. As I'm certain everybody is aware is that we have been working with less around here. We've been doing more with less and it's just a way that I want to show the employees how much I really do appreciate them and hopefully you guys can come out 11 o'clock around at City Park, so if you can show up for that. A business item I want to bring up is that we did open bids the other day for the aeration that's going to be for our wastewater department. It actually came in a little bit under the grant item on that, so we do need to, hopefully for the next council meeting, we can bring that up and we can move forward with that. One of the good things that when we do put in a new aeration system like that, not only does it make everything more efficient by the way the system works, but also it uses less electricity. So it'd be a pretty good payback for that, not to mention it's grant money. So it's no out-of-pocket money there for that, so we can bring that. But bringing that up, in the very near future, I need to have some approval by the council to do a cost analysis for our wastewater department and if we can move forward with that in the next few weeks, that'd be great, so we can move forward with our wastewater on that. Online, I want to talk about some online items right now. We now have traffic reports that are online. You can go by and pick up, I'm sorry, you can access them through your home computer, do them in your PJs, as I've seen it said on some television commercials. You can pick up our accident reports, property damage reports as well. One of the little hiccups maybe on this portion of the program right now is that this pretty much has information that's in there starting May 1st. So from May 1st forward forever, you can pick them up, you can get your accident reports online. Anything prior to that, you will have to come back down and do it around here at the police department, as we always have been. Let's see what other notes right here. Okay, we also have, at this time, we still have some first responders who are still out helping out with our devastating weather that we had over the last few weeks and so forth and we've been trying to keep up with their time. At this stage, we have approximately 1,400 people hours out there that we have been out to help various cities and towns across this area. But the good item on that is that all of our overtime on that will be reimbursed, so it's just one way that we're able to help our fellow cities and towns that are around us and so forth. And I guess at this time, we're going to have our finance director come up and present our financial report.
Are you through with your comments?
Yes, sir.
Let me hang on just a minute, Mr. Mosley. Any questions for the mayor? I've got a, Councilman Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor, recently we had a public safety committee meeting that you attended and the concern was about some cars that the police are kind of short on. Can you elaborate on, and I think you were trying to get a better price so we can get those cars repaired?
Yes, sir. We've got those in the works. We were able to do some negotiating there and we were able to get the prices down on those and we will have, we have money in the budget to have those taken care of and they should be, the paperwork should be completed on that sometime this week and they should be moving in the right direction to get those repaired.
I mean, Councilman Argo?
Mayor, do you, and I see the police chief standing behind you, so I'm going to ask this question, but more than likely I'm going to have to ask him. Do you know when or if in the near future we're going to be doing another undercover, underage alcohol sting?
That is something definitely the fire chief, I mean, sorry, the police chief will have to come up and answer. If that's some information, he might, he might not want to get out.
And you may not want to answer and I certainly understand why because you need to have it be unexpected, but I do want to make a point and that point is, I am very, very concerned about underage drinking. Two instances recently. One, I found a bag with some cardboard boxes in them that obviously hold alcoholic beverages and inside was a receipt from a particular store, which I'm going to share with you. This bag was found in the automobile of an underage person who happens to attend one of our local schools. And when asked about it, this particular teenager said, "Well, that's where we always buy it." So I'm going to share that with you. And then number two, which doesn't necessarily have anything to do with Prattville, but it does in a way, is that I recently attended the Montgomery Biscuits Thursday Night Ballgame, which is better known as Thirsty Thursdays, and the reason being is that it's $2 beer. I can't tell you the number of teenagers from Prattville High School who I personally witnessed purchase beer, were not carded and were not ashamed to be drinking it in front of me and these teenagers know me and I know them and they, I'm sure they fully expected me to go back and talk to their parents, which I'm in the process of doing. But I'm just, I'm bringing that to your attention because especially with school getting out in the next two weeks, there is going to be a lot of activity with young people out on the road and this is something that's very important to me and I just want to make you aware of it.
The Biscuits Ballgame, of course, we'd have to work with that jurisdiction. We'll be contacting Montgomery Police Department, let them know that we've had issues brought to our attention regards to that and see if they can assist us and pay a little bit closer attention to their procedures and practices there regarding minors or juveniles. As far as our local approach to underage alcohol consumption, we do work with the ABC Board. We have checked stores routinely. If you do have stores of some concern, if you forward them to me, we'll make sure that they're added to our list and we'll address that appropriately.
Any other questions for the mayor? I had one regarding the FEMA reimbursement for the staff that have assisted, you know, out of our city limits with the tornado damaged areas and is that FEMA reimbursement 100%?
The overtime is yes, sir.
Okay, so that's totally budget neutral to us for them to assist in the tornado?
Yes, sir. Any overtime that is required, any expenses out of pocket from us as far as fuel, food, anything along that line, then also there's supposed to be, I forgot the terminology, callback?
Backfill.
Backfill, I'm sorry, backfill, where while these people are out of town under this function, then any people that we have to bring in to backfill their position, then we get paid for that.
Thank you. That was my question.
Okay, and I have been told that the paperwork to, for us to get refunded on that is supposed to be in the fast track, so we're supposed to have that taken care of real quick.
Okay, thank you.
Doug Mosley now?
Well, that's not your call. Your part's through.
I'm sorry, I forgot. I am an invited guest here. Thank you.
Let me be present just a little bit longer. Mr. Mosley, you're up next on the agenda, report on the status of the city finances and I'll remind council and the audience that this likewise was one of the additions to the standing agenda that we incorporated in our revised rules a couple of weeks ago. So we're delighted to have you come before us and present this first budget report on the city's finances. I think that we all know that this is a first addition, so to speak, and over time, we'll be morphed and tweaked and sort of customized to what we think is the best presentation. Obviously, you've got a limited amount of time to do it, so we want to make it as efficient as possible, but with that kind of introductory, you're on.
Okay. You'll see in front of you, I actually put the revenue and expense reports. This is through April. The first one is obviously the revenue report by group. There's been a lot said about the sales tax revenue being down the last couple of months. You will see that it was down in April, as has been talked about. One thing I think is worth noting on the sales tax revenue for April, we actually had last year a spike in one of our local retailers. They were up about $40,000 in sales tax revenue for that month. So, that being said, without that spike, we were actually on track, which is, was an abnormality. So, obviously it looks like it's on track from the stuff I've seen so far this month. I'm cautiously optimistic. Everything else is pretty much on track. You can kind of see percent of budget in the middle to see where we are. Some of these are getting really close to be 100% of budget. We're going to be changing a few things. Some revenue that was not expected has come in, so we're going to be making some adjustments in the budget on the revenue and expense side as things have come up that we didn't foresee. Another thing you'll see at the bottom is the other category. There's a lot that's in that, obviously, because we have a lot of random accounts that don't really fall into a normal category. One of those is the grant money from the optocom system, the traffic preemption system. That has not come in yet, so that's the reason that percentage is so low on the budget. If you flip over to the expense report, there are a few departments that are over. These are explainable. I've kind of gone through and picked out the general reasons that they're over. We're going to be bringing some adjustments to the budget in the next, probably the next meeting for you to look over. So, in the executive department, you'll see that that is over in the operations. Part of that is kind of a twofold reason that's over. When creating the budget, we adjusted the fuel and oil expense because the mayor had set up a $100 car allowance each month. However, the former administration had already taken several months of the old auto allowance, so obviously it's over. That will be adjusted to account for that. Also, insurance, we have, we're adjusting a lot of the insurance accounts. This is liability insurance, not health insurance, because of how they were segregated out. So, we're going to be making some adjustments to those in the budget throughout all the departments. Those two accounts are the major reasons that that department is over. The finance department is over some, primarily due to the overrun on the audit. And just to let everybody know, we are, I have prepared a request proposal on our financial audit. I've sent it to the finance committee for them to look over. We're going to be sending that out hopefully by the end of this week. We have, I think, 11 firms throughout the state that we're sending that to, to see what comes back. The next one that has a little bit of overage is the city clerks department. It's primarily due to a overage in insurance, liability insurance. And that's partially due to how they have been, the cost for different buildings has been allocated in the past. I've stuck with how it was done in the past when I broke those expenses out and we will be revisiting that before this next year so we can more accurately budget that. You'll see the HR department is up a good bit. That is primarily due to the workers' comp insurance. That has not been broken out yet. We've been waiting on the audit to come back before we broke those expenses out because it's rather time-consuming to break out which individual from which category goes to which department, so we didn't want to do it twice. Judicial, you'll see on the next page, they are over a little bit. That's primarily due to the fact that the part of the cost from the jail was not budgeted, was not budgeted last year, so that will be one of the things that will be added in. You also see on the last page that debt service is up, is over budget, and that is due to repayment of the $3.1 million that was not in budget, but we're going to be adding in when we go to make the adjustments. And that's pretty much all I have.
Any questions from the council? Councilman Bowles?
Two questions. First, the insurance fund, how's that coming?
The what?
Our insurance fund, how's that coming?
The health insurance fund? We're working on funding that as we can. Obviously, all the claims are being paid on time, but we're not funding that and not funding vendors. We don't want to do that. As long as the claims are getting paid, we're making sure that our vendors are paid.
And as I'm sitting up here looking at the sales tax revenue, this is our seventh month of the year because we start in October. Am I correct on that?
Technically, as far as the financials goes, it's the sixth month of the year because October is pulled into the previous fiscal year.
Okay, so then we should be right on track for the figure then?
Yes, sir.
Very good. That scared me when I was doing all seven. Thank you.
Any other questions? And this one may be for the mayor, but there was an update in the paper, I think, about the number of FTE reduction when you've added retirements and the reduction in force and they were, just rolled them all up. Can you remind me of what that figure was?
I'm sorry, repeat the question again?
The total reduction in FTEs, when the summarized data on retirements, reduction in force, and the freezing, the hiring freeze, I think those were the three main contributing.
I don't have that figure with me.
Forty-six.
Forty-six.
Forty-six. Yes, sir.
And I just wanted to make sure, I mean, I saw what was in the paper and I've seen some of our data, but those are true reductions in headcount compared to what we had in the past?
Yes, sir. Between, because of the RIF program, retirement, and people deciding to go elsewhere.
Okay, and I know it's not the case, I just wanted it publicly stated, there's no funny counting or anything. That's my understanding and I know that's the, you know, because it's easy to make numbers say different things, but we've truly reduced our workforce by 46.
Yes, sir. Only, you know, we do have seasonal help right now, but that's only for a few months. But yes, sir, that's, that is a true number.
And we continue with the hiring freeze in place.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's definitely, if anybody's going to be hired, we have to come back before you, before the council body and ask for approval on that and the only, I guess the only thing I can tell you is we are working diligently to have all of our services performed, even though we do have fewer employees. The employees are working harder, they're working more efficiently. The reorganization that process that we did, I think, has really paid off and hopefully by our next budget cycle, we can really prove exactly what dollars we have saved there. But I think all of the, all the measures that we have taken, we truly will not see a true benefit until sometime in our next budget.
Are these, the trend should start as the retirement, all that sort of gets phased in, you start to accrue the savings as the payroll reflects it and some of the other things that you're?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And I guess back to you, Mr. Mosley, sort of a couple of summary statements? I mean?
I think we're on the right track. I think a lot of things had to get corrected to get us where we are now. I think we've got a long way to go, but I think we're definitely on the right track. And we're all still diligently looking, finding new revenue sources, things that have been overlooked in the past. overlooked in the past, to help us on our way.
And I think we're still working on our financial reports and the different, the different types of reports and what they, you know, could be used for in terms of our ongoing assessment and management. But we appreciate you doing this. Tonight is your first one. I really do think we've turned a corner in terms of having this piece on our agenda, so I applaud you for your part in that. It is now time on the agenda to have a report from the council on any special committee work. So, Councilman Striplin, do you have a report tonight?
No report.
Councilman Wood?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Public Safety Committee met, I guess, a few weeks ago, several items alone, meeting. A lot of stuff was discussed, and I want to thank the interim chief and the captain for attending and giving us all the information that we needed. We acquired a lot of information. There's a lot of stuff pending. That department is, all department is working diligently to keep things rolling right along as best as possible. You heard me mention and asked the mayor about a couple of cars that are down. So, we really got things really streamlined. Two cars out that we really need. We don't have any money to buy them, so he's trying to negotiate a price to get those fixed. But with that being said, that department has moved forward, and in the near future, you're going to be getting some resolution possibly where we're going to need to get some things done. Also, with the Public Safety Committee, we did meet on item four on this agenda. I passed each of you some correspondence concerning that particular item. The Public Safety Committee did meet, and at that appropriate time, I will read the correspondence that I have concerning that particular item. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Wood. Councilman Argo?
Yes, sir. The wastewater committee met last week. We talked about a number of items affecting the wastewater department and sanitation department, two of which the mayor has already talked about, the variation that came in under bid, which is good news. That's going to save us some money. We also met with a company that has, actually, we met with an engineering firm that, that has brought to us some new technology through Rick Teague, that is also promising to save us quite a bit of money. In the next week, with the fund, the sanitation committee will be meeting again to bring a definite recommendation to the council. Also, we also, as the mayor mentioned, we're going to bring to you a recommendation to hire a firm to do an analysis of our infrastructure, our long-term and short-term needs, and the possibility of funding for those needs, whether it be through the revolving loan fund through the state, or whether it be through grants or other means. So, there's a lot going on with the wastewater and sanitation committee at the moment. The other committee that I'm involved with, thanks to Mr. President appointing me to serve with Mr. Wood and Mr. Striplin on a committee to look at redistricting for our 2012 elections, and I'm going to be getting with these two gentlemen this week and arranging a time for us to get together with Mr. Duke to begin that process. It's a, it's quite interesting, because I've been involved in years past with Mr. Beckman before he was elected, but involved with the reapportionment committee of the legislature, and sometimes those get into some pretty interesting discussions on how you're going to reapportion the differences in your population, how they've moved in, moved out, moved to different sides of towns and so forth, and try to make sure that the districts are evenly split among the citizenry. So, we're going to be getting to that this next week, and we'll have a recommendation for you in the near future on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Argo. Councilman Renninger?
No report.
Councilman Bowles? Councilman Fink?
Well, that is everything except the agenda, so I guess now it's my turn to share with you news that already has been very public, and that is that I intend to resign from the presidency of the council tonight and to pass the gavel to President Pro Tem Reneger. I want to make a couple of observations before I actually do that, because then I'll have to be recognized before I can speak. So, it, it, tonight marks, I guess, the sixth month anniversary, because I think you did this, Councilman Argo, the second meeting in November, and I added that up, and it turned out it's about at the six-month mark. And I want to say, though, that I've been on the council a little over 10 years, and it has been an incredible privilege to serve in that capacity as a councilman, then as pro tem, and more recently, as president. And I appreciate a lot of the mentoring that you in particular did in your capacity as president during those years, and continue to do actually, even over the past six months in the role as president. But I, I want to say that, when I say it's been a privilege, part of that has been because I've worked with really, I guess, folks that I really respect. We're each very different. I kid a lot of times when I'm talking about serving on the council or serving as president, that I'm constantly trying to herd cats, you know? And I count the number of cats, well, really, it's eight. I was going to say seven, because I count myself, but I won't leave the mayor out of that analogy. And somebody told me, I was describing something the other day, and they, they described it in a way that I thought maybe that'll be the herding cats analogy, and they said it's like a yard full of chickens. They're all going their own way and scratching and hunting and pecking, but anyway. I do think it has been an incredible privilege to serve as president, and I will continue to serve as a council member. It's a very difficult decision. The challenges before us as a city and as a council, I think Mr. Mosley described it well, we're at the beginning of a long road, but we have certainly taken some significant steps. In a lot of ways, the, the work to be done is still formidable, but every journey starts with a step or several steps, and I really do think that we have embarked on, on that journey in the right direction. And I'll continue to, to serve in the role of councilman for District Four. But I do want to share with folks that I have also been incredibly privileged in my professional life. I've got a little over 27 years of state service, and I hope to work another 10 to 12 years. That's my plan at this point in time. And I've had a real set of expanded opportunities at work that sort of got into gear the first of the year and have started to sort of snowball, and there are additional assignments that I think I'm going to be given over the coming months. And that has really presented a challenge, because at the end of the day, I am finding that, as we all do, the plate is only so big in terms of how much you can put on your plate and do service, decent service to the different task. And in that regard, I feel like to continue to serve as president while I've got the expanded duties at work means that something's got to give, and I don't think I would be doing a, a good service to, to you as a council, to the mayor, to the city, to the citizens at large, or to the citizens of District Four if I continue to try to wear the hat of council president. Again, it's been an honor, it's been a privilege, but I just cannot do, do appropriate service to it and feel like I've done a good job. And with that, the last thing that I would say is that part of what makes this difficult decision not so difficult is because I have complete confidence in the council as a whole, and in particular, in Pro Tem Reneger, to take up the mantle and take up the gavel and continue, and in addition to the pro tem that we'll elect at some point in the near future. So, that sort of takes the edge off of it. And with that, I would like to say, the only thing I didn't realize when I came up with these plans, I think now I'm going to be sitting next to Councilman Bowles. So, it's like I used to sit here, and now I'm here, and I'm going here, so what, do you ever fall off on the end, or?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Start out by taking a point of personal privilege and thank now-former President Tom Miller, or should I say Dr. Tom? You have so many titles, for his distinguished service as our president, and I look forward to working with you, as I do with the rest of the council, for the remainder of our term in office. Thank you. Thank you very much. Our attorney has indicated to me that we need to go into executive session at this point in the agenda to discuss a legal matter. We will go into executive session if that is the will of the council, and then we will return here in the council chambers to work through our agenda after the executive session. At this time, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session. Councilman Miller?
I move that we go into executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposition by like sign. Seeing none, we will go into executive session. We'll be back as quickly as we can, folks. Mr. Argo?
Mr. President, I move that the council reconvene at 7:12.
Motion's been made that we reconvene at 7:12. By Councilman Argo, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wood. Any discussion about reconvening at 7:12? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like sign? Seeing none, we're back in session. All right, we'll start in with the agenda items now. Agenda item number one is a resolution to declare 329 Janice Street to be a public nuisance and ordering the abatement per Title 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. I would ask Councilman Striplin to read this in a minute, please.
Whereas an abundance of overgrown grass or weeds is injurious to the public health, safety, and general welfare by providing a breeding ground and shelter for rats, mice, snakes, mosquitoes, and other vermin, number two may cause a further spread of weeds, number three may hide debris such as glass or metal that could injure, inflict injury on a person going to such property, and number four may also pose a fire hazard and a respiratory hazard. And whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville declared in Resolution Book 2011, page 80, that the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds at 329 Janice Street in the City of Prattville constituted a public nuisance and set a public hearing to discuss said nuisances. And whereas, notice as such by paragraph 11-67-62 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended, was provided in the Prattville progress by certified mail and by signage on the subject property. And whereas, the Prattville Planning Department has inspected the properties listed in Resolution Book 2011, page 80, on May 17, 2011, and determined that the public nuisance still exists. And whereas, the City Council of the City of Prattville held a required public hearing at 6:00 PM on May 17, 2011, permitting the owner of the properties listed in Resolution Book 2011, page 80, to present evidence, objections, and protest regarding the proposed removal of weeds. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville declares that the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds at 329 Janice Street continues to be a public nuisance. Be it further resolved that the mayor shall have the overgrown grass and weeds on the property listed above cut or removed using city forces or the private contractors listed in attachment aid. Any property owner shall have the right to have any weeds removed at his or her own expense, provided the removal is done prior to the commencement of the work by the employees or agents of the City of Prattville. The mayor shall keep an accounting of all costs related to the removal of overgrown grass and weeds and report such costs to the City Council following their removal. So moved. Mr. President?
Resolution has been moved by Councilman Striplin. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Fink. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none? All in favor of this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like sign? Seeing none, this resolution passes. Second item on our agenda is a resolution, a petition for deannexation of intersection, of Interstate 65 and Cobb's Ford Road, sponsored by Councilman Bowles. It was held from our April 19th and April, excuse me, May 3rd meetings. Is there any further discussion on this resolution? All those in favor of this resolution? Councilman Bowles has called for a division of the House. We have, city clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilman Striplin?
Nay.
Councilman Wood?
Nay.
Councilman Ar- Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Councilman Renninger?
Nay.
Councilman Bowles?
Nay.
Councilman Fink?
Resolution two fails for lack of majority. Item number three is an ordinance. It's a request to zone property located off of County Road Four and Corley Road, sponsored by council, at that time, council president Miller, and held from our May 3rd meeting. Is there any further discussion on this ordinance?
I'll make a motion that we hold this.
Councilman Bowles has made a motion that we hold this. Is there a second? Councilman Striplin has asked for a point of order.
I concur with the idea of, of not voting tonight and giving the council the opportunity to discuss with the developer and owner and possibly the industrial development board on other options. And so I would request that the resolution be tabled for a period of time.
Do you have a designated town that you're suggesting?
No, sir.
Councilman Bowles, you made the motion.
I would like to withdraw my, well, I'd like to withdraw my motion to, to hold and second the table.
Okay. The hold has been withheld, or withdrawn, rather. Are you making that in the form of a motion, Councilman Striplin?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the motion is to table indefinitely?
Yes, sir.
Pending, would you restate that again?
Pending an opportunity to meet with the developer, the property owner, and the industrial development board.
Motion to table is before us. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowles. Any discussion on the motion to table? Councilman Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. McDowell, if you will, we just voted on a deannexation, and now we're tabling a rezoning request. I would like to make a request, and I stated this at the last meeting, we got a redistricting coming up in 2012. If, if you can write a resolution, if it does not require a resolution, if the mayor can declare a moratorium, if that's possible, if he can't, will you write a resolution, declare a moratorium on any other annexations or deannexations prior to the 2012 elections?
Okay, is there anything else on this particular item? Oh, Councilman Argo, sorry about that.
No, it's okay. Mr. President, I don't, I don't want to mince words or try to figure out the best words, but normally, a motion to indefinitely postpone means that you are killing it. I think the intent is, is that we would all like for this to be held for some period of time, six months, seven months, whatever the case may be, and it will require a majority of the body to agree to bring it back off of the table. But normally, a motion to indefinitely postpone is a motion used to kill something. A more appropriate motion would be a motion to table, and then that way, it just stays on the table until the council ever has, ever has a desire as a majority to bring it back. But again, I'm not arguing words, but I, because I think we all understand the intent is not to kill it, it's merely to put it to rest and get it out of our way for several months to give an opportunity for these other entities- to give an opportunity for these other entities to work, and then the council will have an opportunity to bring it back if it chooses to do so at some given time.
Thank you, Mr. Argo. Mr. Striplin, would you like to amend your motion?
I'll be glad to either amend or withdraw at the chair's request.
May do it either way you like.
I'll withdraw the motion.
Councilman Bowles, you second that motion?
I withdraw my second and would like to make a motion to table this until further time.
Let us vote on the motion to withdraw first. Is there any other further discussion on the motion to withdraw?
You can just do that by consent.
Okay, I'm told that we can do that by consent, so we don't have to take a vote on that. Now, will I entertain your motion to table?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second to Councilman Bowles?
Second, please.
Seconded by Councilman Striplin. Any further discussion on the motion to table? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like sign? I see none, so the motion to table passes on ordinance, item number three of the ordinance. Item number four is a resolution to grant a lounge retail liquor license, class-two package store license to Rada LLC, Carticay and Calpanapan Patel, I apologize if I butchered your name, I'm just not real good at pronouncing some names, doing businesses Hangover Package, sponsored by Councilman Wood. Councilman Wood, will you introduce this resolution?
Does it have to be introduced again, Mr. McDowell?
Because we-
It's been introduced.
Yeah, so I don't think you have to reread it. You're just bringing it back.
Just didn't indicate that it had been held, so I wasn't sure whether it had to be reread or not.
Yes, just go ahead and discuss. I think it's properly before you.
Oh, it's properly before us.
Point of order?
Yes.
Thank you. My understanding is it didn't get a second last time, so doesn't it need a second to be properly before us?
I would concur with that, yes.
Okay, so I will second it.
It was read but died for lack of a second, so I believe if y'all will second it now that it's properly back on your agenda, second it and proceed with your discussions.
Mr. Chair, to make sure that we're on the right page, I'll be glad to read it.
Okay. For point of clarity, I would desire for you to do that, Councilman Wood.
Whereas Roha LLC, Carticay owner and Calpanapan member Patel doing business as Hangover Package has obtained a business located at 104B Highway 82 bypass east Prattville, Alabama 36067, which is intended to be a package store, and whereas the owner of said business has applied for a lounge retail liquor class-two package store license, and where said license will be a new application, and where said application has been investigated by the City of Prattville Police Department and referred to the City Council Public Safety Committee. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby approves the issuance of a lounge retail liquor class-two package store license to Roha LLC, Carticay owner and Calpanapan member Patel doing business as Hangover Package 104B Highway 82 bypass east Prattville, Alabama. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Okay, the resolution has been introduced and moved. I'll entertain a second at this time?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Miller. Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution? Councilman Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I stated earlier, the Public Safety Committee did meet on this item, and then I gave each of you a list of the items that I'm going to read for consideration before we vote on this particular item.
Please do.
If that's in order. Items to consider for this, one, there's been 24 police reports of incidents addressed from 61209 to 32111, incident ranges from drugs, citizen dispute, theft, disorder, robbery, alcohol offense. And this is just a partial listing. Second thing, the intersection at the location is very dangerous. There's been seven accidents reported at this incident in the past 16 months. Third, additional traffic of large trucks going in and off of Jensen Road, especially log trucks traveling to International Paper increases this danger. There are several churches in close proximity to this location. They include Safe Harbor Church, Mount Rainbow Baptist Church, and Spring Year Amen Church. Also, a few blocks away is Prattville Boys and Girls Club and Miss Sydney's Learning Finally, Mr. Chair, as Councilman Argo spoke about tonight, very concerned about the sale of alcohol to minors. Both applicants have sold alcohol to minors in 2008 and 2009 and pled guilty to those charges. Granted approval of this application is not in the best interest of safety, health, and welfare of the community, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wood. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none?
Mr. President.
Mr. Argo.
Mr. President, may I please ask for a two-minute recess? I think I'd like to-
Chair will call a two-minute recess.
I apologize, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right, we will resume our agenda items now, come out of the recess at 7:30 PM. Let the minutes duly note that, please. Okay. Now, we're at the point where we must vote on this particular item. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none? All in favor of this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like sign? Was unanimously defeated. Next is a resolution to set a public hearing to grant a retail beer off-premise only and wine, and retail wine off-premise only license to Pious Patel. Once again, I apologize if I butchered that name. Owner doing business as King Meat and Food, sponsored by Councilman Wood. Councilman Argo, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Whereas the City of Prattville adopted Ordinance Book 97, page 002, on January 21, 1997, for the purpose of setting public hearings to allow public comment for licenses, including retail beer and wine located at 143 Highway 82 Bypass East Prattville, Alabama 36067, which is the type of license Pious Patel doing business as King Meat and Food has made application for. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby sets a public hearing for June 7, 2011, at 6:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall for said license application. Mr. President, I so move.
This resolution to set a public hearing has been introduced and moved by Councilman Argo. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wood. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like sign? This resolution passes. Next item is a resolution to set a public hearing to declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance and ordering their abatement per Title XI, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama 1975 as amended. Councilman Miller, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Whereas an abundance of overgrown grass or weeds is injurious to the public health, safety, and general welfare by providing a breeding ground and shelter for rats, mice, snakes, and mosquitoes and other vermin, and whereas an abundance of overgrown grass and weeds bearing wingy or downy seeds when mature may cause the spread of weeds, and whereas an abundance of overgrown grass and weeds may also hide debris such as glass or metal that could inflict injury on a person going to such property, and whereas an abundance of overgrown grass and weeds may also pose a fire hazard and respiratory hazard, and whereas Section 11-67-1 of the Code of Alabama 1975 as amended permits the City Council of the City of Prattville to declare an abundance of overgrown grass and weeds to be a public nuisance, and whereas the Prattville Planning Department has inspected the properties at the following addresses and determine the existence of an abundance of overgrown grass and weeds. 2579 Cobbs Ford Road, USA Travel Center, 1679 East Main Street, USA Travel Center, 411 Hallmark Drive, 2002 Highway 14 East, USA Travel Center, 209 Juniper Court, 311 Marlet Drive, 610 Pinecrest Street, 103 Stakely Drive, 804 Stonewall Drive, 311 Summer Hill Road, vacant lot next to 430 East Sixth Street, vacant lot next to Regent's Bank, Highway 14 East, vacant lot on White Oak Court. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville declares that the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds at the above-listed addresses are a public nuisance. Be it further resolved that the owners of said property, as they appear in the records of the Tagga County Revenue Commissioner, are ordered to abate the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds. Be it further resolved that the owners of said property are ordered to appear before the City Council of the City of Prattville at a public hearing at 6:00 PM on June 21, 2011, in Prattville City Hall. Notice of such hearing and a copy of this resolution shall be sent by certified mail to owners of said property. Mr. President, I so move.
This resolution has been moved by Councilman Miller. I'll entertain a second at this time?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Fink. Any discussion on this proposed resolution? Councilman Miller.
And this will be a question for Joel. One of these USA Travel Centers is just a stone, I pass it every day, Stone's Throw, the one next to the post office, and aside from what we're addressing with this, I think we've talked before, it's like the owners just kind of locked the door and left. The dumpster container has been picked up, but all four of the garbage receptacles are overflowing, they've been crammed full, and there's litter and trash all over, so it's a bigger issue than just what we're addressing here. So any thing we do about that part of it, or?
Yes, sir, we're addressing that in a different fashion. We've started dilapidated structure proceedings on, I think, at least two of those properties, and hopefully will allow us to gain access to that property if they won't clean it up. Hopefully, they'll clean it up, or we can talk to somebody involved in the bankruptcy to get that cleared up. But we are, this is one action we are taking others to address the whole problem.
I appreciate it. If you could sort of keep that on your short list, because that's, you know, especially it's a high-traffic area, but especially with the post office being right there and that thoroughfare, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilman Fink?
Yes, this is actually going to be a question for Joel again as well. Typical growing season, this is normal course of action for us, and a lot of these, again, I know Councilman Wood's been good about asking this question fairly regular, a lot of these are frequent flyers that come back year after year after year after year. What options do we have to, one, escalate the penalty phase? I know we've done a lot of work with expediting the process, but it just seems that it would be reasonable if we have the same address year after year after year after year, that there would be some type of enforcement penalty that we could do that would be more than us having to go through this process, or maybe be able to act on it quicker.
Yes, sir. This process is aimed at getting the properties cut as quick as possible so that the neighbors are not impacted all summer. The frequent flyers, as you call them, we have generally started taking them to municipal court. The reason that we don't choose only municipal court is because that process is a little longer with just the setting of court dates. At times, it can be as long as the whole summer before they actually get a court appearance, and that's not the fault of the court, that's just the process. So we take it this route, first of all, get the property cut if they choose not to do that, and those that are repeat offenders, we will also seek a warrant to bring before Judge Colley and let him explain it to him.
Any further discussion? All in favor of this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like sign? Seeing nothing? Seeing no opposition, resolution passes. Item number seven is a resolution to authorize the release of funds not to exceed $25,000 to be placed in the Juvenile Court Services Fund for Attaga County. Councilman Fink, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville's Police Department Youth Services Division prosecutes numerous cases each year involving juveniles, and whereas frequently these cases require the juvenile to be placed with the Department of Youth Services on a temporary and permanent basis, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that budgeted funds not to exceed $25,000 are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to the Juvenile Court Services Fund of Attaga County from the judicial miscellaneous contract services line item. Mr. President, I so move.
This resolution has been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. Any discussion on this proposed resolution? Councilman Wood.
Can anyone tell me how much is in that line item?
Mr. Mosley, you want to answer that question?
It's $25,000 in that line item. That's the only thing that's in that line item.
That's it, completely? Okay.
Any further discussion? Councilman Bowles?
Do we have $25,000 that we can move over? Quite honestly, yes or no? No?
Not so.
Okay.
Councilman Fink, do you have your hand up?
No.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Doesn't this need to hold?
No, it's a budgeted item, it does not need to hold. All those in favor of this prop-
It doesn't need to, I'm sorry.
Are y'all exchanging some conversation here that I need to be aware of?
Just ask him to confirm it doesn't need to hold.
I know it doesn't need to hold. I've already cleared this up, President, or, excuse me, former President.[1773.46][1773.46](laughter) All those in favor of this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like sign? There's one, two, three, four opposed. The resolution fails for the lack of a majority. At this time, we will have, oh, excuse me, let's- At this time, we will have, oh, excuse me, let me see if there's anything from the floor.
I believe and I apologize, but I believe I meant to vote, and I'm losing the right hand and the say in the eyes and all that. I apologize. I would like to have that vote reconsidered. I do apologize. I believe I voted incorrectly on that one, on my intent.
You voted on the prevailing side by voting against it. Are you asking to recall the vote?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That will require a second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wood. Any discussion? We will try this one more time. All those in favor of this proposed resolution signify by...
Reconsider. All in favor of reconsidering?
All, all in favor of reconsidering. I am so blessed with people to help up here, I'm telling you. Talented folks, I might say. All those in favor of reconsidering signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition? By a like sign, seeing nothing, seeing none. We will reconsider this resolution. Now, is there any further discussion on the resolution?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I think I got the answer I was looking for, but I want to make sure I'm clear, because the vote kind of made me look like we didn't have the money. Were you correct in telling me that the money is in that particular account for that amount? Is it there?
It's not in a specific account. It is in a line item in the budget, but it's not in a specific segregated account.
Okay. Do we have a twenty-five thousand dollars?
Would you not have twenty-five thousand dollars just laying around? No, sir.
Okay. Just got to know.
Any further discussion? Councilman Argo.
Yes, sir. It really kind of threw me off. Mr. Fink introduced it. He's chair of the committee, and then he voted against it, so it really kind of threw me off there for a second. But, Mr. Mosley, I apologize. It's my fault. I should have asked you prior to this meeting before voting on this whether or not the funds were available. Please, in the future, feel free to pull me aside, and anybody else on the council, if, if we do not have funds available, or if you feel as though that this is not in the best interest of the city, please exercise your judgment as Finance Director to tell us before we come into this chamber that we don't need to vote on this. Had I known that, I would not have voted in favor of it. So I just, I'm not getting on to you at all, I promise. I just want you to feel free to pull me aside and say, hey, we don't have the money for that. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Roll call.
Councilman Fink has called for division of the House. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilman Striplin?
Nay.
Councilman Wood?
Nay.
Councilman Argo?
Nay.
Councilman Miller? Councilman Reniger?
Nay.
Councilman Bowles?
Nay.
Councilman Fink?
Nay.
The resolution failed unanimously. Is there any further agenda items to come from the floor? Councilman Argo.
Mr. President, with the, with the passing of the gavel this evening from Council President Miller to Council President Pro Tim Reniger, and now Council President Reniger, that does leave a vacancy for Council President Pro Tempore. That person, of course, would serve in your absence, or when you were otherwise unable to serve. I am privileged to place in denomination the name of my, my good friend and council member from District Seven, Nathan Fink, to serve as Pro Tim of the Prattville City Council.
Councilman Argo, you jumped the gun on me. I hadn't opened up the floor for nominations yet, but since we're into it, we'll go right ahead and do that then. All right, there's been a motion made for President Pro Tempore for Councilman Fink. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Striplin. Okay. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations for President Pro Tim? Okay, I declare the nomination is closed. All those in favor of Councilman Nathan Fink as our President Pro Tim signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition? By a like sign. Seeing none. Congratulations, President Pro Tim Nathan Fink. I don't plan on missing any meetings, but be ready. We'll now entertain comments from folks here on any subject, whether it's on the agenda or not. Is there anyone that'd like to come forward and address the council on any matter? Please give your name and your address before you speak, please, or before you address the council. I mean, you're going to have to speak, of course, to give your name and address, aren't you?
My name's Andrew Benoist. I live at five-eleven Old Mill Way, Prattville, Alabama, three-six-zero-six-seven.
Welcome.
How you doing? I would just like to ask, and I think it's on the, the third item on the agenda on the County Road Four, if, if it could be, were to let the public know what, what's going on, you know, ongoing with the situation, to where if, you know, if, trying not to keep it in the dark, I guess, is what I'm saying, you know, let people, neighborhoods on County Road Four and all be aware of what's going on with the development and everything on the, the bypass going eighty-two as well. So, thank you.
Yes, sir. We will endeavor to keep you well-informed. Anyone else like to address the council at this time? Councilman Fink, I'm sorry.
Yes, I just wanted to comment to that. I obviously represent that district as well, and I've spoken to a few of the residents out there. I'm, I'm always available, cell phone, fax, not fax, I don't think faxes even exist anymore hardly, but cell phone, email, and all that type of stuff, and I'll get you my numbers after the meeting, so, thank you.
Anything else to come before the council at this time? Okay. Our next council meeting will be, it's scheduled for...
Closing comments.
Closing comments, okay. Do you really, you really want to talk again? Mayor, do you have any closing comments?
Yes, sir. Thank you. First off, I think I might have given out a wrong date earlier when I was talking about clicker ticket. It starts Monday, May twenty-third, and runs until June the fifth. And the other thing that I want to bring to the council's attention, whereas Monday, May the thirtieth is Memorial Day, garbage pickup will not be done on the thirtieth, it will be done on thirty-first, Tuesday, for all routes. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any closing comments, Councilman Striplin?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to congratulate you, young men, on your newfound promotions, and hope you all do well.
Councilman Argo?
Yes, sir. As I, as I've tried to do to keep you all updated on what's going on with the Alabama Legislature, as I mentioned to you in, in an email, the, the Alabama Senate passed a bill to give the City of Prattville the opportunity to allow draft beer sales. It was passed out of the Senate, but there was an amendment placed on it that requires a public referendum. Of course, that would be attached to the next countywide vote, which is not going to be until the spring if the legislature passes a bill to move the presidential primary, but that has been done. It was sent to the House. Unfortunately for us, it was put in a, a committee that it's supposed to go to, which is local legislation, but Mr. Beckman, who represents us and who is going to help us move that bill if at all possible, has run into some, some stubborn folks that don't want to see it his way, so we're going to continue to support him and ask him to continue to represent us and try to move that bill. There are seven days left in the legislative session, which is plenty of time to get it out of local legislation, get it on the House calendar, and get it passed. The budgets will be up on next Tuesday, and then, then the, the House will be free to pass other legislation, so we're going to ask Mr. Beckman to please continue to try to push that bill. I know that that's a, that's an uphill battle for him, but we appreciate his efforts so far, and know that he will continue to do the best that he can on our behalf. And I also want to thank Mr. Fink for agreeing to serve as Pro Tim, and I look forward to serving with him in his new capacity. Thank you.
Thank you for the update. Councilman Argo. Councilman Miller?
Yeah, a, a couple of comments. I, you know, I mentioned work responsibilities earlier, and over the past couple of weeks, had had an opportunity, work-related, to, to spend two days, two separate days touring the tornado-ravaged parts of the state, and then this morning, I spent about three and a half hours on a pontoon boat in Lake Martin looking at some of that damage, again, with my boss. And I, I just want to say, one, I commend the public safety departments for, you know, the, the stepping up to the plate, because they are one of our first defenses on that, and it makes you appreciate what all those men and women do that, that wear those uniforms when a disaster like this strikes. It also sort of makes you count your blessings, you know, because to look at some of the razor precision on, on where the, the tornadoes moved through, and, you know, you'll see a house that's literally unscathed next door, fifty, sixty feet to a house that's totally demolished, and I know we had some of that in our own tornado a few years ago, but it's, it's really mind-boggling, and it really makes you appreciate, you know, how folks pulled together afterwards in terms of the recovery phase of it. Aside from that, I, I want to say that I congratulate you once again on your new role as President. I think you're going to do fine. I've got to say that I'm relating to my time, and it, it continued even up to the last minute, that it's kind of like, it's great to have folks that are understanding and willing to help you and pitch in and remind you, because until you're in that seat, you don't know, you don't know what it's like in terms of trying to keep all of the rules and, and regs and Roberts stuff and all that, and, and do a good job, and I think you, you're off to a fantastic start. And likewise, I congratulate, congratulate Councilman Fink in his new role as our Pro Tempore, and I'm, I'm looking forward to some exciting things. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Miller. Councilman Bowles?
Yes, sir. I want to congratulate President Reniger, I still want to say President Argo, but President Reniger, I know we're in good hands. You're going to be a great leader. Looking forward to serving under you. Congratulations to Pro Tim Fink. He'll do a great job on his side. And a side note, thank you, Dr. Miller. It takes a big man to step down. A real big man to say, hey, I don't have time to do this. It'd be better off of somebody else doing it. Thank you for swallowing your pride and putting this council and this city before your own good, and I will always say it's been a privilege to work with you and know you. Thank you very much.
Councilman Fink?
Yes, sir. I guess first of all, thank you to each of my fellow council members for your show of support. I sincerely and humbly appreciate that. I commend you, Council President Reniger. You've got probably the most difficult seat in the House, given the fact that you've got two former Presidents on each side of you, and during the course of this evening, it seemed like they were tugging on you to try to coach you along, but you got the toughest seat in the House, but thank, thank each of you.
Actually, we have three council members who have served in the capacity of President of City Council, Councilman Wood, Councilman Argo, and Councilman Miller, so we're well-staffed with leadership. I can assure you of that, and none of them are bashful about offering their opinions and their help, and I appreciate that. We will build on the foundation that they have laid and those that came before them in this position. We're moving forward, believe it or not. Things in Prattville are getting better every day. We're taking baby steps, but in a few years, hopefully in a couple of years, we'll be back where we need to be. Thank you for the opportunity to serve. Look forward to offering any leadership that I have. Accept your congratulations, and hopefully it won't be condolences. That being said, our next council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June the seventh, two thousand and eleventh, at six P.M. right here. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? By a like sign. Hearing none, we adjourn.